Welcome to a special brief, hopefully a brief special meeting today. So let's go ahead and open it up to public comments if there are any. So again, the phone number is 702-589-9629 related to our two agenda topics.
Yes, good afternoon, committee members, Fred Volz for the record. As you discussed the rate study recommendations and especially recommendations one and three, there have been some developments the committee needs to consider. When fiscal year's 20, fiscal year's 22 budget was discussed at city council last week, the numbers presented by the finance department don't tie back to either the Raftellus rate study or the budget numbers that were deposited with this committee at its last session by finance without explanation or context. Page 144 of the city council's budget packet proposes $3,138,320 of administrative charges to all city utilities. These are broken out as follows. $1,353,520 for central services versus the $1,025,000 suggested by the budget director on her February 2nd, 2021 spreadsheet for utilities. $949,222 for administrative fund expenses with no detail provided. And $835,000 for billing and collections. City finance department representatives need to appear before this committee and explain what is going on with the materially different numbers from meeting to meeting and document to document before this committee can judiciously endorse such spending. Regarding rate study recommendation three, with utility capital projects significantly pared back from when Raftellus did their work, further reductions in utility rates beyond the 3%, $10 a month deserve consideration. These changes are particularly appropriate when finance reports there is a $35 million dollar balance of unrestricted utility cash as of December 31, 2020. And I would ask that these comments be added to the record verbatim. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll give it just about 30 seconds or so in case anybody else would like to call in. Okey dokey, let's go ahead and go on to the first agenda item and that is to approve the minutes for January 6th for the workshop and the regular meetings. I, does anyone have any comments on the, on the, Greg?
We now have a new minute called minuets. Item one, last word.
Okay.
And just some other spelling errors in general that we just need to go through.
But was that in the agenda item or was it on the minutes itself?
On agenda item one.
Okay.
Regular meeting minuets.
Oh, good catch. I didn't see that. Any, was anything on the regular minutes that you found, Greg?
Nothing that came that was really outstanding.
Okay. Anybody else?
I move we approve the minutes of January 6th, both the workshop and the regular meeting minutes.
All seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So it's approved unanimously because I thought, I heard, I believe I heard George. George is on the, make sure it's a, George is teleconferencing today to make sure that, thank you, that he, that everybody understands that he is present today.
I said aye, I hope you heard it.
Yes, that's what I was saying, yes, I did, thank you. Okay, so now then we'll go ahead and go to the next agenda item number two. And discussion of report for the February relating to the motions and other recommendations, motions related. For the motions that were done during February 3rd meeting and other recommendations from the final rate study report. So Eileen and I went over the report that was written and it's in the package. We made quite a few revisions that I gave to Josh and we'll pull it up. If, if everybody agrees to it, as we've done in the past, we will make the changes. If they don't, then we will go as says, but hopefully this works for everybody. And George, we'll, we'll read them out so you can hear our changes.
Okay, thanks. I can see you on, actually I can see it on my computer, so.
Okay, okay, then good. So we'll have Josh print out, so why don't we just have Josh print it out and we'll, and have everybody read it and then go from there if that's, okay, we'll print out each section. So on the, on the very top, one thing I just thought about is, do we want to say draft or draft for partial or, because we have more to come. And so the, does the draft cover it or do we need another word here and there to say that this is only some of our recommendations? We say it, we, we make changes that help clarify that, but do we want the title to have something that says more to come?
Could we use the word preliminary?
No.
I would say just add to an as of date.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, well, one thing we're going to do is do below where say voted on. So do you still want as of or do you, is the voted on, okay? So if you want to put the voted on and then see what people, Josh, so we're just being consistent with our other ones? And then that way that has the date, is that?
Larry, on your other comment, they have made or put these changes into the 22 budget and assuming that this will start July 1 of this year. And you might mention that this suggested for the 22 budget.
Okay, so do we, so do you want it in the title or you're just somewhere in our, in our?
In the paragraph.
Okay, great, great, that's, that's a good point. So when you, okay, let's, let's, we'll get the first part, or do you have a suggestion where to put it? Okay, well then let's go through it and see where it, where it best fits because that's a good idea. So I think, yeah, our suggested is at the end of the first paragraph. And so we've, we've, so go ahead and if you can type that in, Josh? The red, did you put the, you got my red copy, can you read it? So if you can type in the first, that, yes, the finish of the la, of the, of the first paragraph, we'll just do it a bit at a time. Because we added a reasonable amount trying to help clarify. Okay, can everybody see it or do you want me to go ahead and read it or, or what's the easiest way for everybody to do?
They help if you read it, hello, but I can see it, that'd be easier to follow.
Okay, I'll just read it from there too to make sure we did. The UAC, so we've, up on top, oh, that's one thing, first thing we need to change is the, so go up to utility administrative committee, yeah, write the first, very first sentence, the utility advisory committee and put in parentheses, parentheses, UAC, just so it's, we're consistent. Then the new, the new sentence we're proposing is the UAC does not agree with the extreme reduction of monthly. Okay, and I think that, didn't I not change that? That should be monthly service charge, I must have not caught that right. So that should be monthly service charge, yeah, instead of rates, just so it's totally clear. Okay, so the UAC does not agree with the extreme reduction to monthly service charge, charges for the large meters that Raftellus recommended, but still hoped review and recommend a reduction in rates for the large meters, yeah, S, in a month or two. Now, do you want to read the whole paragraph to, because, or did everybody have a chance to go through it and if they got any additional comments before that? Because what we're doing is we're just relating that, I, I'm not sure we all agreed on how we, how to do the $10 and so the $10 and the larger meters really isn't probably going to work, but if we, if we can get back to it and say that we're trying to review it, then that's, that's what the intent is, if that makes that, if that makes sense. Does anybody have any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none.
I'm not sure where we are, I, I'm not sure where we are in the document. Are we looking at the thing that says draft UAC rate study recommendations?
Well, we, can you, can you, okay, so you're not, yes, it's, no, you're, we're doing draft USC rate study recommendation, correct. Are you seeing a live version?
No, I'm seeing you, but that's okay. If you tell me where you are in that document, then I'm, are we?
We're at the last, we just added the last paragraph that I read and I can read it again if you, if you need it. Do you need me to read what we're suggesting to add?
Can they show me the, has it been typed in? Can they just show me that on TV there?
It should be on the TV, right, Holly? It's, it's up on there, so it's, it's in blue right now, can you see it? If you're looking at the light?
Oh, I'm sorry, my light, I, yes, my fault, I can see everything now, my light speed stopped all of a sudden, yeah, I can see it now, sorry, just carry on.
Okay. Okay, so we can always come back to and see what we're, where we're going. Let's see, so we talk about the 3%, so it's either we do it in this paragraph Marty or we do it in the recommendation, because we've added a new, couple new, more recommendations. So do you want to do something in this paragraph where we first say the recommended 3% or do you want to do it as part of a, that we want to, because what we're trying to do is we say we, as our recommendation, we're saying that we need to revise the current electric rates resolution.
You can put it in the first paragraph as a date as of, you know, July 1st, 20, the 20, fiscal year 22, or as long as you put that in there somewhere, I'm not.
You got, okay, Eileen?
Well, we changed the, the second paragraph there, we inserted a paragraph. And then on our third paragraph, there's a spot where we can put that in when we get there.
Okay, great, because yeah, so the second of, you're saying third paragraph. Okay, great. Okay, so then if you can add the second paragraph, no, that one, no, go in between there, yeah, add, add our second paragraph, thank you, and then I'll read it. Guess maybe I can start reading it, maybe it might help as he's, now as he gets ahead. So the ongoing capital projects, the utility O and M budget for fiscal year 22, 2022, and additional review of the five-year capital improvement plan are the major priorities of the UAC at this time. Once the UAC has advised the city and the city council on these priorities, the committee plans to discuss the final rate study report in more detail and make recommendations on that in the near future. So what this does is tell them what we're currently working on, why we're not doing the report as of right now and that we still want to review it in more detail. That's, that's the intent, so if anybody, did I read that too fast? And George, it's in, it's in, it's highlighted now, hopefully that helps you see it.
I see him typing it there, the on, what you were just saying, I've seen that come up, so.
That, yeah, that's what we're reviewing right now.
Thank you, thanks for keeping me in the loop, thank you.
Now Dennis, is that, I don't think, I don't, I don't think Eileen and I put anything in that should concern the city, but if there is anything, please let us know. Hopefully it's all facts and, so nothing. Okay, did you, anybody want me to read it over again or we, we good to go? These are a little bit bigger changes, so it might take a little longer, but just. Okay, so I guess not hearing any changes, like I said, we can come back to it, then let's, so then we deleted most of the, see, we didn't delete all of that, or did we? Yeah, I guess we did delete pretty much, maybe it's just as easy to delete it all and then start with the, with the new paragraph. Okay, so I'll, as he's typing out, then I'll, so the UAC does not agree with most of the recommended, with, excuse, excuse me, the UAC does not agree with most of Raftellus' recommendations and certain assumptions that were made in the final rate study report. These following are, the follow, excuse me, the following are the recommendations of the UAC at this time.
And it's at this time where we can change it to say for the fiscal year 2022 budget.
Okay, or, or related, well, I think what Marty was also saying that you just want to make sure that they understand that we understand that the, we, we believe is that the budget already covers the 22, that it's already a reduction, it already includes the 3%.
Yeah, but he wanted to put the.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, would that, would that cover that though? Because if we just say fiscal year, that doesn't say that it's actually a, that the budget that they've been shown, there is actually a 3, is the 3% reduction.
Their budget does show that.
Yeah, the city budget does show that.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, but if we just say the July 1st, we're not saying that, that that's what they've been shown. So maybe I'm misunderstanding.
The, what I'm suggesting is it says the following are the recommendations of the UAC for the fiscal year 2022 budget at this time.
Yeah, that's. Okay, okay. Let's see. Okay, so the following are the recommendations for the UAC, for the 22 budget. Okay, and then colon, yeah. Now, the one thing that we were trying to figure out is, is, so the UAC does not agree with most of Raftellus' recommendations and certain assumptions. So the certain assumptions is what we thought was reasonable, but if somebody else can think of, because part of what it is, is the 3% and the $10, but most of the other recommendations are related to the cost of service. And that's what we, I don't think I want to get into it right there, but that's where I, I believe we all have a major issue. And so is certain assumptions, because the way they, it was, it's one options and so they, they made assumptions on how to use that one option. And then the way some of the tables are and also the, the explanations, and I think where you've, sometimes you would see that it's a 3%, then it's a 2, then it's a 2.7% and just stuff like that, that, that if you fall, if you dig into the spreadsheets, you can sort of understand what they're doing, but it's not clear, even if, once you dig in. So that's, I'm just, that's what I'm trying to say with those two words, certain assumptions. But if somebody can, if somebody thinks that there's a better way to say that, I'm, I'm happy to modify that. Okay, well, I'm not hearing any changes, so let's go ahead and change the, add the other changes and then if something comes up. So we've added three addi, let's see, my, two, two addition, yes, two additional recommendations. To help clarify the 3 and the $10, we added that in, sort of like we did last time where we talked about the resolution to make sure what the step I believe would actually be, need to be done. So the first one is revise the current electrical rates resolution by reducing the energy charges by 3% for all customers. Now Dennis, you were saying that you were going to modify that in detail. Do you want us to say anything else on that or we, just related to 3%, this is what we need to do? Do you have a preference in anything?
I don't know that I have a preference, I mean, your recommendation for council is to, is to reduce the rate. So to me, the fallout, or the, the response to that is that then you revise the resolution and take the city council through. It seems like the recommendation is not the resolution, the recommendation is the reduction in the energy charge.
Well, but.
导致一个， a draft resolution that would be presented to city council.
So the fallout would be, would be the, because we, you, you have some thoughts, Greg wanted to make sure that the solar was corrected, so instead of going in detail on that, then we're just saying, when we get to the resolution, we explain why are the things that are being modified, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking and, and that goes back directly to the rec, the recommendation you actually made at the last meeting.
Are you okay with that, Greg?
Yeah, I just, it's, it's, we're getting squeezed and we're trying to get a lot of things done, but yeah, that's the basic gist of it. I'm seeing a lot of solar stuff come up, I got a phone call from Carson City, Nevada, asking if I would put solar on my roof as part of Nevada Energy and I'm going, it doesn't make any sense. So it's important imperative that we, Boulder City, get the, the resolutions straightened out and get them written correctly.
Well, the reason I wanted to add, I'm just taking the 3% from the top, well, Eileen and I were taking the 3% from the top, bringing it down below and just saying, here's our recommendation, so it's clear. And so, and we stated before is that we, the, to get that 3%, the resolutions have to be revised. So if it wants to be restated, if it needs to be reversed, then that's fine, but if that's okay, then we can, we can go with that. And as, and as Josh has already done, Josh has already got the $10 in there too for the same, same aspect.
So Dennis, are you saying you don't want us to use the word revise the current electric rates resolution?
Well, that's, to me, that's not a recommendation that was made, the recommendation that was made was to reduce the rates, the response to that would be to revise the resolution and that would be what would be presented to.
Okay, so instead just say, reduce the energy charge by 3% for all customers.
Right.
But, but to make sure that the council understands, and maybe they do, maybe they don't, so would we say, so if we swap it, if we put, the resolution has to be revised, current resolution has to be revised to accommodate this or something like that, would that be okay? Okay, so if we just say, so you're going to put, reduce the electric service charge for 3% for all and then put, then put comma?
Sentence, new sentence.
Okay, new sentence. Okay, so yeah, see, Josh, I guess get rid of, either cut it and bring it down to the bottom to, to save it or retype it, whichever you want, but we're going to have, the current electrical rate resolution is going to be in a next sentence.
Yeah, I would just say this would require revision to the current, actually require approval of state council for, maybe the revised resolution or something like that.
So I guess Josh is saying, so, is saying this, instead of the at the very beginning of the sentence, this would require?
Yeah, just say this action would require revision to the.
Electric rates resolutions, is that good?
Yeah.
And then if you can do the same thing to the water then too, then Josh, reverse it like that. Okay, so, okay, now we're saying reduce, we, so our recommendation is reduce the electric, reduce the energy charge by 3% for all customers. This action would require a revision to the current electric rates resolution. Okay, I like it. And that, yeah, just, okay, then the next one would be reduce the current water, okay, and we need, so we missed that one, sorry, see? Yeah, we, okay, get rid of the water rates. Yeah, could, get rid of the current, reduce, see, uh, currency, reduce, okay, gotcha, there we go. Reduce the current monthly water service charge for all customers. Uh, it is monthly, that, okay, yeah, well, do we repeat ourselves, is it month, because it is monthly, but it's also.
Monthly, that's fine.
So we want monthly in there or not? Where, where?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Eileen, so yes, thank you. This action require revision to the current water rates res, go ahead Marty.
Well, is it to the, the water rates or that, that $10 was a ser, is more or less like a service charge? It's not changing the water rates?
True, but it's, it's what the, but that's why I capitalized it, so that the actual title of the resolution is water rates resolution.
Okay.
So if there's any confusion, I'd be happy to change it, but that, that's why we put it in there, the title, that's the title of the resolution. Well, it's, it's not the full title, but it's, it's, it's how it's referred to. That's why we, but I think we have it in there by saying reduce the monthly water service charge. Okay.
Joshua, if you backspace over that number three, it'll take it out and renumber everything correctly.
Okay, and then, so now on number three, so we were looking at that and, so because the final did change it and it doesn't, it doesn't show that the million 25 is going, is being increased, then I think we just, we just want to make sure that we say that we don't want it to increase, but are still, I think, I understand the committee correctly is that we're still having a problem with the three funds, trying to understand it and how all that, all they, all of the money fits together. So we just say the three administration funds need to be explained in more detail.
And how we spell out have been.
Okay, administration fund.
Administrative.
Administrative, okay. Administrative, okay. Thanks. And then, um, so then, I, we didn't have any problem with number four. I think four was good. Did anybody have any comments with number four? So even though the franchise fee isn't in there, it's just stating that, hey, we're, so that's what the city had put in the report and I'm, I'm, I feel good with that, I think, and then I, the rest of us.
I have a comment on that one.
On number four?
Yes.
Okay, so what's your, what, let's, let Josh finish doing number five and then we'll go back to that, sorry.
Sure.
Okay, George, so on number four, we're starting out, do not accept or enact any financial franchise fee. So what, what's your concern there?
I feel we're sort of misleading the public a little bit, because at least that's just my opinion. But if you look at, you know, when we discussed it last time, you said, well, everything's in table 19, the electric utility cash flows. So for Raftellus, for the preliminary report, that was from 2020, table 19 had the franchise fee in it of $800,900 for the electric and a central, central services fee increase, which meant the O and M was at about 12 million. And so when you go to the final report, now the O and M is at 10,978,000, having removed the franchise fee, but the revenues that we're getting in are just the same. So in other words, we haven't removed the franchise fee, we're just not calling it that. But you're, the city's saying, you're going to give us an extra $1 million. If you're buying something, buying a car or something, and you look at the bill and you say, I don't like this fee on here, and they say, we'll remove it, now it's gone, but the price of the car is the same, then it's just a sort of semantic point, you're still paying the same amount. So my point is, if the franchise fee was really gone, the users should be paying a million dollars less to the city in FY22, but the amount we're paying is unchanged. The table 19 for reduced ref- We're just putting it in the unrestricted fund balance. So for my money, we're sort of not being forthright with the residents of Boulder City. Now, they don't particularly care, so maybe it doesn't matter. But to me, it seems very misleading to say we've removed a franchise fee, but we're gonna collect the money anyway. That's my only point.
Well, but, okay, so if you want to change this, but that's, we're trying to say is we're, so we're not relating it to any table or anything like that at this point, George. All we're trying to do is say that, okay, let's read it and make sure that I'm not misunderstanding anything. So do not accept or enact any franchise fee relating to the Boulder City utilities now or in the future. That, I think, is clear. The UAC believes that the Boulder City utilities are nonprofit and should remain as such, although the franchise fee was removed from the final revision of the rate study. And to our knowledge, it was, because they're no longer labeling it. If they put it in there, then we need to find that, but it's not labeled that way anyway. And so if it's, if it's hidden, then then we would need to show that. But I don't, I don't believe it was hidden. I think they, but they might have did, have brought something else in that they decided was more, but we'd have to look at that more closely and that's what we want to do in the future. So from what the report says, it was removed. That's, that's what we know. The UAC still, the, and then it says the UAC still maintains its position that that should not be enacted. So that's what we're saying, and that's why it's important to be there. So we're not trying to hide anything, to what we understand, it's there. Now, when we start, we've put this on the agenda and we get to the point and you could show us that it's there, then I'll be happy to review that. But right now, I didn't see that it was there. I don't know if anybody else-
Well, it's, the cash has been from the franchise fees put into the unrestricted fund balance. So they're still taking the money, they're not calling it a franchise fee. They're just saying, we want that extra $1 million anyway, even though now we can't justify it.
The unrestricted fund is, is a, is, the unrestricted fund is a valued, I mean, it is, is an asset, it's not, it's not a reduction. Go ahead, Greg, you said, you got your finger up.
Well, I understand what he's saying, but the math doesn't work the same. The, the fee is in there, but it's just in a different column now. So they've, they've pulled it out of the report, but it's still in there monetarily in a, in a document or in a cha- in a chart. So what George is saying is we've got to review these numbers for accuracy, and now we're getting into the finance department of things and we still are waiting for them to come before us and report on the questions we've asked them. So we're not adopt, we're delineating franchise fee out of this, our UAC recommendation. But what George is saying is the money amount is still in the collectibles to the city.
Exactly.
So that's why he's bringing that point up. We've all agreed unanimously not to charge it, but the report from Raftellus is still showing the city collecting it.
Exactly.
Okay, the one difference, if, okay, the difference between the 22 in this, in the table 19 and what the city has as a budget, part of that is, is the city is charging $6 million for the power, where Raftellus's report only shows 5, 5.3 million. So there's $700,000 difference right there. So I, I, I think instead of, we still need to review it and I don't, so I don't see that there's anything wrong with the statement in four, that even if we say, okay, hey, we found some money that we're concerned with, it looks like the franchise fee. Number four, I don't think states anything wrong. So am I missing something?
On, on the surface, you're absolutely correct, but all George is asking is we follow that $1 million until it's, it's stricken from the income that of the city for utilities.
I, I have no problem with that, it's just gonna take time to do that.
Is that right, George?
Well, I think we should lower the rates accordingly. If we don't need that $1 million, then the rates should go down by $1 million, which would be a 10% decrease, not a 3% decrease. But anyway, I don't want to put a spanner in the works, you know, I'm obviously in a minority of one here. I just want the public to understand that I don't agree with this method of doing things. I've made my point. I think it's better if you proceed as you intended. I just wanted to express my dissent. I think it's misleading to say, well, we're charging you less, but actually the amount you're being charged is exactly the same. So it's a sort of a distraction. It's like, well, let's argue about the franchise fee, but it actually doesn't matter, because the amount you're gonna pay the city is exactly the same. We can label things however we want. The O and M expenses go down by $1 million, but you still pay the same. But I've made my point, repeating it ad nauseam isn't gonna make it more valid or change people's minds, so I've made my point.
All right, thank you. I was just trying to explain, because you're not present, what was going on, is the, the charts and the-
I agree with you, Greg.
Okay.
I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, so, so now we're, we're a vote of two, not just by yourself, because I'm with you.
Okay, I feel less lonely.
I don't disagree that we need to look at the, I agree, we need to look at the numbers, but it doesn't change the, what four says. We're not, that's what we understand the report says, that's the information we have now, if it's in there something else. So as some, as far as number four goes, it's still correct. We need to do something in the future, I totally agree. We need to look at it a lot more closely.
Yes, and all we're trying to say is in face value, number four is exactly the way it should be written, but when the devil's in the details, there's still a $1 million fee in the budget for Boulder City that we cannot explain.
Well, that, and that, and so we can bring that up, hopefully we'll have finance and the, we can ask, we can ask that question at the next meeting, because it's, that's our understanding. But as, as Fred brought up, and so that actually it leads into Fred's question about the reports not matching. And if I'm understanding, as I was shown, for what was shown to the council in their last meeting for the breakdown of the finances, the numbers don't match Raftellus either, because they just put it in differently. And for instance, they put in the $600 for the voted fee in the revenues, whereas Raftellus doesn't. So there's different things that's hard to, to follow. And so again, when we asked Raftellus to change some of that stuff, they said, no, they don't do things that way, but the city does, so how can, how can we track anything? So that, this is very frustrating. So I agree with the frustration, but we just, we need, we don't have any proof it's in there, we have to be shown that it's still there, because I think numbers were modified, it doesn't mean that it's still franchise fees. It, if it is the same $1 million, there's other things that have happened. Like I said, one thing is-
Well, they took the $1 million and put it into unrestricted cash, that's what happened. I'm simply going by the Raftellus report, because that's what we're discussing.
Well, it's-
Going by the one and, okay, anyway.
The unrestricted cash is, is a, is a positive. If they put a million dollars in there, it would be a negative, I mean, what you're saying. So that's why we have to discuss it in more detail later, because we're, we're not exactly, we under, we're, we understand there's a problem, but we're not on the same page, unfortunately, as with the numbers, because the unrestricted funds doesn't ma- it, it can't be in the unrestricted funds, because that, that would be cash available, not, not taken out.
We're getting off topic.
Right, it's cash available, that's the whole point. You're bringing in more cash than you need, and so you have more cash available, because you didn't reduce your income by that franchise fee. You said, we'll, the income from the customer remains the same, we'll just pocket the cash, and that's where the pocket is, in the unrestricted cash.
Well, I, I guess I just, I agree to disagree on that one. And so let's, we'll talk about it later, we're getting, we're, it's been pointed out, we're getting off track.
It, it bears further study.
So, yes, okay, thank you. Okay, so let's go to number, so overall, is everybody okay with number four now? Okay, so let's go to number five. So we modified five quite a bit too. So Raftellus's final rate study report recommends extreme rate modifications to the city accounts and residential and commercial accounts to reflect the cost of service option. The UAC does not believe these modifications should be enacted in fiscal year 22 budget cycle or ever without further review and additional data. Dennis, are you okay with that? You? Hey, did I, did we spell Raftellus wrong? So George, are you on, are you following number five?
Yes, sorry, I was drifting away on my thought, uh, let me. Well, again, I don't really agree, but that's okay, I don't want to put a spanner in the works. It's okay to have a minority that disagrees. Oh, wait, I, I misread. So we're saying we don't agree with Raftellus. If that's what we're saying, I agree with that.
That's what we, that's what we're saying.
Okay, I agree with that.
Okay, so, um, it's, do you want me to read the whole thing out again? Or how, what do we want to do to, are we good with it? Or what, what, how does everybody want to finish?
I'd like to suggest correcting the spacing between the numbered items, should be just one space between each one. No. There you go. Backspace. I think you've got that set on double spacing or something.
Yeah, words, words formatting is a pain, a pain in the patoot.
You've got it set to. Anyway, with those modifications, I move we accept this recommendation and have it forwarded to council.
Dennis, I, I think this is still somewhat related to this. Are we on for the ninth or the 23rd?
Yes, you're on for the ninth.
Ninth, okay.
So what would be included in that is the, and you guys will see this before, obviously before it's, we'll send it out, Lisa, you get an opportunity to see it. We're gonna include all the, all the minutes from the majority, not every minute from every meeting, but with regards to rate discussions, just as backup information for city council. But the three items that will be on the March 9th meeting, hopefully I got that correct, is this document with regards to the recommendations, the FY22 CIP document revised per our discussion last time with just that one project taken out. The FY2226 that was reviewed by this committee at the last meeting. And then just some backup minutes for councils, just so they have it. So that would be all included in the March 9th meeting.
Has this been, was the 20, was the SIP already sent to council or is that, or since we're discussing it, the council, does, do we just give it to them in the package?
It'll be in the package ahead of time, we can send it out sooner if you'd like.
Well, what is the committee?
It's on a, it's easy enough to do.
Do we need to, do we want to send it out ahead of time, which would be that in this, or do we just have it in the packet?
We can do both.
Do both.
Okay. Just, I guess, just to be-
Yep, yep, and they've seen a lot of it, but yeah, but, you know, they saw the previous recommendations on the rates, the, the ones, so there's basically going to update to that, update to FY22 and then the 22 through 26, so, yep, we'll get those out.
And then we'll just rediscuss it a little bit. We can discuss it at the regular meeting on, when we come to the agenda, the report items, to, if we have any more comments related or how we want to present, or for me to-
Right, and if there's, if there's, I mean, we'll have the report at the February-
March.
Or I'm sorry, March, what is it, the third or the fourth, whatever date that is, just so it's in our packet as well as theirs for March 9th.
Okay.
Do we have a meeting for the UAC on March 3rd?
Yes.
So I believe what we did is we, we did a reverse again, so we're having the workshop a little longer and then trying to do a, a shorter.
Yep, and we sent out the time, I think, in the email, I have to go back and find that, but yeah, it's, and we'll make sure it's on everybody's schedule.
I don't know if we need to bring any power bars or, or something. Pizza.
What time's the meeting on the 3rd?
I believe it starts at 1:00.
Yep, so Howard, yeah, we're-
So Howard, if you need to call in, that's fine.
I might, I, nothing's on my calendar right now, so I'll just block it off.
Yeah, we're looking at 1 o'clock, 2, and then was it 4, 4:45 again? For the workshop and then starting the, or 4:30 and then 4:45 for the, can't remember if we'd, if that had been completed, decided to go.
You know, I'll probably be here for the, the meeting on the 3rd, but the 9th, I'm tentatively gonna be out of town that way.
Okay, but you'll be here for the 3rd.
Yeah, I'll be here on the 3rd.
Right, yeah.
The 9th, the council meeting?
Yes, I think in all, all it needs to be is I will, I will represent the-
UAC.
The UAC on that, and so it depends on, I'm the only one that needs to go, so. I'm not saying anybody doesn't have to, just saying they don't need to if they don't want to.
Do we have to vote on this motion now or we're done?
Um, I don't know if we were just looking for Josh's final change, you get it finished up, Josh, or are you still fighting with the word?
I have a, I have to get out of here.
Okay, so let's, well, I guess, so you made a motion then? I'm sorry, could you repeat that just to be?
I move that with the corrections I noted on the spacing, that we accept this recommendation memo to be sent to- to be sent to city council.
Okay, I'll second that. Okay, so if everybody's okay with that motion, then I will ask for, um, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so, so we have six in favor and one, one, one opposed. Okay, so, um, is there any, any other comments on that, before we go to the public comment period, which will be then the final before we close?
Can I bug out of here?
Yeah, okay, thanks a lot for coming.
No, no, I'm sorry, that's the other meetings, I just had things go up, so...
Okay, so then, um, I will close out the item number two.
All right, take care.
Thanks, and we will go to the public com, the final public comment period. Okay, so just a few minutes, uh, and then once we put the phone number up, then we'll, we'll ask for comments, just give us a few minutes. Okay, so we will now then open up the final comment period, excuse me, public comment period, again, phone number seven oh two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. Thanks again, Josh, for doing it, we'd appreciate, it helps a lot, I greatly appreciate that.
Uh, you may wanna mention this for the public at the future meetings, actually, this meeting was posted before the governor and his address, the future meetings will be open to the public, still one hundred fifteen back here.
Okay, so I've been informed that, um, the, uh, meetings, um, from this point on, I guess, will be open to the public at, with a maximum at this time of fifteen people in the audience. Uh, reservations also, make sure, so need to call the city clerk, or? Call the city clerk if you'd like to attend, if you're a part of the agenda, do they need to call the city clerk, or?
Uh, I mean, you need reservations to be, or if they wanna be on the agenda, they need to let, I mean, if they're gonna talk, they just talk to the public.
Well, yeah, just like for me, I'm gonna, if I would be there, do I need to do anything special, or since I'm part, that, that's something that's already a known.
No, you're, you're...
Okay, so if you're on the agenda, then you're okay, but if you're not, then you need to co- contact the city. Okay, so the city clerk. Okay, so again, uh, so we'll just make sure that it's still open for the public comment, a few more, we'll just give about, about a minute, and then we'll close out. So again, seven oh two, five eight nine, nine six two nine. Okay, not hearing any comments, then, um, see, this is a regular meeting, so I will ask, uh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I guess, I guess, sir, I've got a second on that. Okay, so, so we'll close the meeting at, uh, one fifty-four. Thank you, everybody, for your attendance, and for everybody's help and, and, uh, comments, appreciate it.
Thanks again.
That's it, you go back to work.